Good afternoon and welcome to the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority. May we have roll call, please, for council?
Council members, Garpadian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Sinanian?
Here.
Mayor Devine?
Here. And Housing Authority?
Authority members, Devine?
Here.
Garpadian?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Brazian?
Here.
Chair Sinanian?
Here.
And first item, next item?
Report of the Clerk and Secretary, the agenda for the April 11th, 2017, joint public meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority was posted on Friday, April 7th, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item before you is a proclamation declaring National Community Development Week and a proclamation declaring April as Fair Housing Month.
Thank you. Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, ma'am. We'll bring up our CSP and CDD staff, specifically Mr. Moises Carrillo, and he will receive the proclamations from you.
Both of them?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow, you got two. All right.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Devine, members of the City Council and Housing Authority, and Chair Sinanian. Moises Carrillo from Community Services and Parks, and today I have the honor of accepting the proclamation for the National Community Development Week for April 17th to April 22nd. In mid-year, in mid-April of each year, the Community Development Block Grant Program is acknowledged nationally for its activities and its functions that it provides to the community. This year, we also added the Home Investment Partnership Act program as part of CD Week because of its certainly involvement with community development programs and involvement of housing. This year is the city's 24th year in the CDBG program and the city's 24th year, I'm sorry, 42nd year in CDBG and the 24th year of home participation. One of the main features of CDBG, as we know, is its importance in providing valuable community services and also the fact that it's also leveraged very heavily with other funds. In fact, for every dollar that we receive in CDBG, about $3.48 is leverage of other non-federal sources such as the Palmer Park Project, which is a good example of leveraging for CDBG program. The home program is funding, as you know, for safe and affordable housing development, and we have an example of certainly Cypress as a affordable housing program that was funded with home programs. This year, the proclamation is going to be used to recognize some of our CDBG past and present agencies, one of them, of course, being the Door Hope Program, who has been with the city for the past 10 years as a recipient of block grant funds, emergency shelter grant funds, or Chanel ESG solution grant funds, believe home program assisted with their project, and of course, community of, community of care funds as well. So they are certainly one of our agencies we like to highlight. In addition, Community Development Partners, who constructed Cypress Senior Living, Living Project, 18-unit affordable housing development project, is also one of those agencies that we have recognized for the home program. Again, they are using our home program, federal tax credit programs, that are certainly utilized for a lot of affordable housing here in Glendale, so we like to recognize them as well. What unique about this year is, and certainly is, the fact that the White House and administration has looked at CDBG and home as cutting 100% of their funding in fiscal year 2018. That impact certainly impacts not only Glendale but across the nation. It impacts all of our home programs, it impacts our homeless programs, and all our community programs. So certainly, it's important attempt to have a unified vision of certainly trying to work with our congressman to block those grant funds. So we're very lucky to have a congressman, Adam Schiff, who is very supportive of our HUD programs. In fact, I know some of their staff members are here, and I believe Mary is here. She's with, of course, Adam Schiff, and certainly been very supportive of us in getting our questions answered, and hopefully, this will not take place. So further ado, I'd like to ask Door Hope staff and also Community Development Partnership to come up, and we do have, I believe, a plaque for them and a proclamation for them, and I believe they want to say a few words as well.
They do. Please.
Moises, I'm sorry, did you say it's not going to take place, or we're going to work towards it not taking place? The funding cuts? Yeah. Well, you know, I'm always an optimist, so I know it's not going to be take place. So, yes, we are going to do both. We are going to certainly continue to work with our coalition of cities in Southern California and across the country. Our senators have been very supportive of us with Senator Kamala Harris and Diane Feinstein. So, yes, we are going to certainly continue to oppose those cuts, and hopefully, this will not take place.
Is Mary here? It's hard for me to see in the audience. I don't see Mary. Okay.
I believe Mary, I know she's been very busy with Congressman Schiff, who's on a Easter break, but I certainly know he's been very tied up, so she wasn't going to come. So maybe if I can have?
Staff, yeah.
Sure. Hi, Mayor, council members. My name's Kyle Payne. I'm president of Community Development Partners, and, you know, just wanted to thank the council, thank the Housing Authority, thank especially city staff for all their hard work on the project. Cypress Senior Living Projects, 18-unit rehab project that we did, completed in 2013, that literally without home funds, the project could have never gotten done. They provided us a long-term permanent loan, as well as some soft funding that allowed us to then leverage the low-income housing tax credit program. So, you know, we took a dilapidated building from the 1918s that was overcrowded, without 65 people living in 18 studio units, rehabbed it, added the community garden, got some local art put in there, and have services on the project, and have restricted rents for senior residents, and six units set aside for veterans. So, you know, the home program was literally the most critical component of that project. And so, yeah, very happy that we were able to utilize those and really hope that, you know, those funds do not get cut going forward, so that we can do more projects similar to that in the city.
Thank you. And I'm sure we have many families that are thankful that you took that step. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Kyle.
Good afternoon. I'm Lurica Killer Brew. I jotted down a few things, so forgive me. I want to take this moment to highlight a few things. I used to be a Door Hope resident, and my family wound up being homeless because the rental property that we rented from retaliated from an accident that my special needs son had. And we found Door Hope two months later, after we exhausted our funds in regards to our savings. We found them. They housed us. They were a blessing to us. And our situation was a little different because my husband and I both, we worked, so we're not what you would call the typical homeless family, because we did work and we had things intact, it's just the retaliation against us that happened. But nevertheless, Door Hope was there for us. They provided resources for us, provided shelter for us. We stayed there four months and was able to save money and be able to get back in the real world, so to speak. And I'm proud to say now that I am giving back, because I am now employed there and been there for almost a year, and I'm truly grateful for the program, and thank you all for having us here today, and thank you for this opportunity.
Absolutely. Congratulations to you on your success.
Thank you.
Wonderful, wonderful. Anyone else? Okay, so I have the commendation. I'm not going to read the whole thing, because you've listed all of it, you've mentioned all of the partners that we have, and just simply, whereas the week of April 17th through the 22nd has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association, to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnerships Home Program. Therefore, I, Paula Devine, Mayor of the City of Glendale, on behalf of its residents, do hereby proclaim this week as National Community Development Week in support of these two valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality of our community. Thank you very much. So I have a plaque and commendation. Thank you. Thank you, and now we'll go on to the second commendation, which is for Fair Housing Month. Sir Ochoa?
Here we go again. Again, good afternoon, Mayor Devine, and members of the Housing Authority City Council, and Chair Sinanian. Again, Moises Carrillo, Community Services and Parks, and again, I have the pleasure of announcing April 2017 as National Fair Housing Month. This day, actually, this exact day marks the 49th anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, known as the Fair Housing Act, signed into law on April 11th, 1968, by President Lyndon Johnson, the Civil Rights Act expanding on previous acts, and prohibited discrimination concerning the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, color, religion, and national origin, and was later amended to include sex, disability, and family status. Just as a side note, constituent letters to the President at that time, Johnson, were 150 to 1 against promoting and advocating and signing the Fair Housing Act, so we certainly have gone a long ways from them from that time. The city of Glendale acknowledges Fair Housing Month with a Fair Housing Proclamation today, and we also host a Fair Housing Workshop and Tenant Landlord Counseling Workshop in April. In fact, we had ours last week, and we had over 35 residents participate in that workshop. Again, we know the concerns have been rising rents, concerns about affordability in this community. So it's customary to always acknowledge an agency here in Glendale that provides services to residents for fair housing and housing tenant landlord counseling. And this year, of course, is the Housing Rights Center, who has been providing these services to Glendale residents for over 21 years, and done a great job, especially in these times, to provide those kinds of services to our community through the block grant program and also through our Section 8 program funds to educate tenants and landlords as well about housing rights. So I would like to introduce Chancella, who will say a few words as well about our Glendale Fair Housing Program.
Thank you. Thank you very much to the City of Glendale and to its residents for continuing to support fair housing. I just want, Moises is very correct, in the history of the Fair Housing Act, just one other thing I wanted to add is that even though the constituent, citizen, citizens were against the passage of the Fair Housing Act, and as he said, sent letters 151 against it, the Congress at that time was just as bipartisan and divided as it is today, and yet they recognized the importance of eliminating housing discrimination, and they voted unanimously for the passage of the Fair Housing Act. And I don't know if that could happen with any bill today, especially one that's brought for civil rights. So the Housing Rights Center is very fortunate. We were able to provide services to over 700 Glendale families every year with the funding that we received. And we provide landlord-tenant services, and in addition to assisting families and individuals to keep their housing, and also to inform landlords of what their responsibilities are under the law, so hopefully, they can avoid violating the fair housing laws. So we thank very much the City of Glendale, and we thank you for this continued support. And I, I've been doing fair housing advocacy since 1992, have been through lots of different administrations, and I am very optimistic that our funding and all of our funding will continue. Thank you so much.
And we're right along with you there on that one, believe me. Thank you. Thank you very much. The proclamation, in case our residents don't know, the 49th anniversary of the enactment of the Civil Rights Act in 1968 guarantees the right of, the right to be free from housing discrimination based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, and physical and mental disability, including AIDS, HIV. And so today, we, on behalf of the residents, we do hereby proclaim April 2017 as Fair Housing Month. Thank you. Can I have a proclamation? (applause)
Why don't I give this to the vice chair?
No, the vice chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Why don't we give this to the vice chair?
Yeah. Joy is the vice.
Share some of the wealth. Not that I wouldn't love to present it, but...
And I would like to call up representatives from the Door Hope, because I also have a, an award in recognition with gratitude for your years of outstanding service to the Community Development Block Grant Program. And next item, please.
Next item on the agenda, under Director of Community Services and Parks, we have fiscal year 2017-18 proposed annual action plan for Community Development Block Grant CDBG Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, and Home Investment Partnerships Act home programs, and transfer of CDBG funds from completed and canceled CDBG projects to a citywide, a city council resolution adopting a negative declaration. He is city council motion to approve a fiscal year 2017-18 CDBG ESG and Home Annual Action Plan, authorize submission of the annual action plan to the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, and C is a city council resolution of appropriation transfer $61,378 in CDBG funds from the fiscal year 2016-17 Catholic Charities Glendale Community Center Improvements Project, and $12,352 from the completed Palmer Park Improvement Project, to the fiscal year 16-17 Pacific Park Playground and Pool Shade Structure Project as recommended by the CDBG Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Devine, members of the council, members of the Housing Authority.
We're bringing it up.
Good afternoon. Each year, the City of Glendale receives formula entitlement funds from Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD to administer the community development, housing, and homeless programs in the community. The plan's program priorities for this year remain consistent with the five-year plan that was adopted by Council on the Housing Authority back in April of 2015. The program priorities consist of social services, neighborhood improvements, capital projects to community facilities, housing, and homeless services. One second, I'll wait until... I'll power through then. Basically, on November 8th of last year, City Council on the Housing Authority approved the CDBG funding allocation plan based on the estimated funding that we would be receiving for fiscal year 17 and 1718. As mentioned in the report, an RFP was issued for CDBG funds based on estimated funding. The CDBG Advisory Committee met on February 24th to review all the RFPs that were submitted, and on March 23rd, we had a public hearing to hear those, to hear the recommendations, and we are here today asking approval of our funding allocation. The beginning of the year, staff had estimated $1.6 million for fiscal year 1718, based on last year's entitlement funding, so we're hoping we'll receive the same amount as last year for 1617. Those figures will go, hopefully, a little, will increase, hopefully, or come down a bit, but we're hoping that we receive 1.6 million. From the 1.6 million, $320,000 will go to admin, $240,000 will go to social services, and $400,000 will go to the capital improvement program for community projects, and the rest will go to CIP capital improvement projects. I'm sorry, the city's CIP capital improvement projects. I'd like to touch base regarding the social service programs that were funded. There were 10 proposals that were submitted in the amount of 363,000, correction, $393,000, and with only a funding of 240. Out of the 10, eight were funded, and the social service agencies that were funded were agencies that we currently fund for this fiscal year in 1617. The two agencies that were not funded were Home and Amen for their athletic equipment and some income for rental of facilities, and Family Promise of the Verdugo's, which is a homeless prevention, a nonprofit that deals with homeless prevention and homeless services. Out of the eight that were funded, 43% were for youth programs, 30% homeless programs, and 27% for adult counseling. In terms of CIP community projects, we had allocated $400,000 for CIP projects. For the three agencies that submitted, actually, two agencies submitted, one submitted two projects. One was the YWCA for ADA improvements and fire sprinkler system in the amount of 200, plus 248,000. We had Home and Amen turn in two proposals, one for their main campus to renovate their, the flooring for the office, one of their offices, and their conference room on the second floor, and another from Home and Amen for the north campus to renovate the entire basketball gym. Those were three community projects that we're recommending funding, and there are three city projects that we're recommending funding. $79,000 for the Pacific Park Playground Shade Structure Project, $370,000 for the homeless housing project, and $230,000 for the Section 108 loan repayment. There are exhibit, you can refer to the exhibits, Exhibit 2 and 3 for the list of recommended funding per social service program and CIP project. The additional $34,000 that we've received was from a canceled project. The Catholic Charities canceled their project. They were funded $95,900 for this fiscal year. They canceled because they needed to expedite their project and were having a hard time meeting hot deadlines. So out of the 95,000, $34,522 was allocated to the community CIP projects for the community projects, the YWCA and the two Home and Amen projects. And then the rest, the $61,000 allocated to Pacific Park Playground Project. So with that being said, we have a total of $434,000. ESG, the Emergency Solutions Grant, there's $142,000, and that revenues will be distributed through the COC. COC, the Community of Care, has approved $49,000 to go to Essensia, $52,000 to go to YWCA for domestic violence, housing, and emergency shelter, and another $40,000 for Loews and Fissus Program. With that being said, we're requesting City Council and the Housing Authority to approve, correction, to adopt negative declaration for all of our capital projects, to approve the fund allocation based on the committees, the CDBG Advisory Committee's recommendation, and to approve all of our transfer of funds of 1617 into the program for 1718. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer the questions. I have our committee chair, Mr. Armic Avadiscian, here to answer any questions, and also CDBG supervisor, Moises Carrillo.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Mr. Councilmember Garpadian?
Yes, thank you. The homeless housing project at 370,000, is this the program we started from last year to save that money instead of using it for inspections or code enforcement?
Yes.
Is this that amount?
Yes.
So this is the second year that we're doing this?
Yes.
Okay. And also, I have a technical question. One of my commissioners that I appoint is the chairperson of Glendale Youth Alliance. Would that make a conflict for me? Sean Sahakian? I pointed him to Arts and Culture Commission, and he's the chair of the Youth Alliance, Glendale Youth Alliance?
It's not a conflict for you.
Okay. That's more important. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Counsel, any other one? Counsel member?
I just have, I have one question, and it's not really a, the Cypress project that we were talking about, is that, is that kind of part of the home program? Because I wondered, when you say affordable rental development, new construction, acquisition, rehab program, is that where these funds will go? This is 95,000?
Yes. 900,000.
No, it's almost a million.
900,000 for home program, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So in that particular project, we use it for act rehab?
Yes.
We have used them in other projects like ACE 21. It's a function of, the best way to apply those funds, but home also comes with quite a few strings attached, as you know from other projects. So we're trying to find the right application of funds, because if you hold on to them too long, they lapse. So it can be any one of those categories that you're in.
I see. Okay. Well, Councilmember Garpadian?
Yes. The Pacific Park Playground renovation, I was at Maple Park about a couple of months ago, and there were a young couple that came down from northwest Glendale to use the exercise equipment that we have in Maple Park, and they said there are no parks up in northwest Glendale that has the same exercise equipment. I think I sent you a picture of them, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Is that something that we're going to start looking into our parks when we're renovating the playgrounds and everything to install the same kind of equipments that it's very popular and people use?
Councilmember Garpadian, we have, part of the DIF plan was to allocate about 170,000 for outdoor play equipment. We are currently looking at Pelencone Park for some outdoor play equipment. Maple Park, we also received a grant from LA County. We're going to get a, hopefully, a workout full gym at Pacific Community Center indoors, and we'll have some at Heritage Garden, outdoor play equipment at Heritage Garden, not play equipment, exercise equipment, and at ARC with the master planning of ARC. And master planning of north end of Verdugo Park, we'll ask our consultant to add some play equipment and conceptual design.
Okay. Thank you.
Didn't they used to have a...
Not play equipment, I'm sorry.
Exercise.
Outdoor exercise equipment. Didn't they used to have a parkour there where you went from spot, place to place and do a workout at each, and then all of a sudden it disappeared? At Verdugo?
At Verdugo.
Do you recall that?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
But we'll definitely look into that.
I think I remember that. Maybe it was, well, way before your time.
But the Pacific Park Playground, it's a shade structure project. We're going to add shade structure to both the pool facility and to the playground facility.
Shade structures are being very popular nowadays, I think.
Yeah.
Don't know how.
Me neither. Me neither.
Well, I want to, I want to thank the CDBG for making these tough decisions. I know it takes a lot of time for them to go around our city. The public probably doesn't know, they visit every applicant, ask questions...